Good evening. Welcome to the July 2, 2024, 5:30 City of Minot Planning Commission Meeting. Call or roll?
Bowman.
Here.
Domes. Gates. Iverson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kibler. Longton.
Here.
Menham.
Here.
Offerdall.
Here.
Pantanilla.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number two, let's go to the pledge allegiance. Please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number four, which is the approval of the June 2024 regular meeting minutes. Turn it over to commissioners for a motion.
Commissioner Bowman, I'll move to approve.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson, is that right?
Yep.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All right, with that, go to session, call or roll.
Bowman.
Yes.
Iverson.
Yes.
Kibler.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Longton. Menham.
Yes.
Offerdall.
Yes.
Pantanilla.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number five, Thompson Fifth Edition Zone Change Public Hearing Request by Scott Louser, representing Henslayer LLC owner for a request of a zone change for an apartment complex located on a property zoned C2 General Commercial. The applicant is requesting a zone change to RH High Density Residential, bringing current zoning into alignment with the city's 2020 or 2040 comprehensive plan, future land use maps, and better reflect the existing development of the property. Legal description of the property is Thompson's Fifth Editions Lot 1314, Sub Lot A, and Lot 15, Section 35, Township 155 North, Range 83 West, Ward County, North Dakota, and the address is 3205 Fourth Street, Southwest. That will turn it over to staffs for findings and report.
All right, Chairman Offerdall, members of the Planning Commission, the subject property is bound in black in the map you see before you. The pink represents the 300-foot notification buffer. The property is located at 3205 Fourth Street, Southwest. The applicant is seeking a zone change to RH to bring it into compliance with the 2040 comp plan's future land use map and to reflect its current use as an apartment complex. The current zoning is C2 General Commercial and the surrounding area is zoned C2 and R3. R3 is RH equivalent. The future land use for the subject property is urban residential, general commercial, parks and recreation designations are adjacent. You can see some site photos. The photo on the left is facing northwest and shows the property entryway. The photo on the right is facing west, it shows parking lot. Photo on the left here shows a parking area and the shed, and the photo on the right shows the end of the building and green space and courtyard. Here are the findings of fact, they can also be found in staff's written report. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt staff's finding of fact and recommend approval to City Council for a zoning map amendment from C2 General Commercial District to RH High Density Residential District with no conditions. With that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for city staff?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Dietrichson, just out of curiosity, since the new plan would not conform to policy, what is the rationale for approving it on the part of staff?
Actually, it's out of conformance with the plan right now. This application would bring it into conformity with the future land use plan. It's zoned commercial, but it's a residential use, and in our comprehensive plan, we identified that the current zoning did not, you know, mesh with the current use and designated it urban residential, which allows for the property owner to come in and request a zone change.
Okay, thanks very much.
Any other questions for city staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody in attendance that wishes to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Is anybody there, anybody who wishes to speak in opposition to this agenda item? Anybody wish to speak for or against this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and I'll turn it over to commissioners for a motion.
Mr. Chair, but I'd move to approve based on staff finding of fact.
Second.
I will second that.
Who wants, all right, we'll go with the motion by Commissioner Kibler and a second by Commissioner Pantanilla. Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll call it roll.
Bowman.
Yes.
Iverson.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kibler.
Yes.
Longton.
Yes.
Menham.
Yes.
Offerdall.
Yes.
Pantanilla.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to agenda item 5.2, Highlands at North Hill Third Edition Variants, public hearing request by Brian Billingsley, Community and Economic Development Director, representing 701 Development, owner for a request of a variance for the side yard setback requirements on a R2 two-family residential district with a PUD overlay district. The legal description for the property is Highlands at North Hill Third Edition to the City of Minot, North Dakota, Block 3, Lot 10B. The subject property address is 2532 Landmark Drive. With that, we'll turn it over to staff for findings and report.
Chairman Offerdall, members of the Planning Commission, again, we have an aerial map. The subject property is again bound in black. The 300-foot buffer denotes the property notification boundary. It is in the Highlands at North Hill subdivision in Northwest Minot. The applicant seeks a variance for the side yard setback due to a lot being platted in such a way that the approved building plans cannot be constructed inside of the required setback. So that brings us to our next slide here. This is a snip out of the actual plat itself. So this was approved through a PUD plan, and the PUD plan required that all lots have a minimum width of 65 feet. As you can see, this one is 61.18 feet wide. This was missed by city staff at the time the plat was approved, way back in 2012 when this one was going through. And it was also missed when we approved the PUD plan. So this was missed by staff during the evaluation of those applications, which leads us to a point where we have a site plan for this allowed building plan, which is the Chinook Plan, which is the only single-level twin home allowed within the PUD plan on the approved building list. As you can see from the site plan here on Landmark Drive, it would not fit. The builder has already worked with us and cut the 43-foot, you know, designed width of this building down to 41 feet to get them inside of a five-foot setback, but they still need a variance for that, for that last, you know, five feet to fit into the lot. And it's important to the character of this neighborhood, the PUD very much describes the character within this neighborhood, and to have one of the two-level twin homes go on the end of this block would deviate from the desired look of the neighborhood as they move forward with development. The current zoning is R2 two-family residential district with that PUD overlay. Surrounding area is zoned R2, C2, and public. The area around it is all designated urban residential by the future land use map. There is some gateway, commercial, and public adjacent outside of the subdivision itself. Here are some photos facing north and facing west. It looks like most vacant lots in town look. So here's facing east. I draw your attention to the one on the right that shows the property facing south. That is the floor plan that they hope to, again, build on this lot that otherwise wouldn't fit without this variance, as you can kind of see the character of the neighborhood is establishing itself. And this lot having a two-story twin home would deviate a great deal from that rough line. All of a sudden, you'd have a big bump up on the rough lines of the houses. So it's just, that's the reasoning behind the design in the PUD and the reasoning behind the request for the variance. Here is staff finding of fact, it can also be found inside the staff's written report. And staff recommends Planning Commission adopt staff finding of fact and approve the variance to the street-side setback for Lot 10B, Block 3, Highlands at North Hill Third Edition, from 25 feet to 20 feet to accommodate the building of the Chinook floor plan. With that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for city staff?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Dietrichson, is that, is a five-foot difference per side? Or is that five feet split two and a half?
Chairman Offerdall, Commissioner Kibler, it would only be applied to that one lot. So the twin home, the center of the twin home sits on a lot line, that's how the twin line, so the one side of the Chinook would be built to the, at the plan drawing as designed. The side with the setback variance would be cut two feet shorter than the design calls for, and that's where the entire five feet would be applied is on that street-side setback.
And the neighbors on that side have been notified of this meeting?
Yes, all neighbors within 300 feet have been notified of the variance application. There are no direct adjacent neighbors, it's street-side, so it would be the neighbors across the street that would be, it would be facing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for city staff? Okay, seeing none, open the public hearing. Anybody in attendance that wishes to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Anybody wish to speak in opposition to this agenda item? Anybody wish to speak for or against? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and turn it over to commissioners.
I'll, I'll move to approve based on staff's findings of fact.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion to approve by Commissioner Mount, and we'll go with a second by Commissioner Longton. Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, call the roll.
Bowman.
Yes.
Iverson.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kibler.
Yes.
Longton.
Yes.
Menham.
Yes.
Offerdall.
Yes.
Pantanilla.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number 5.3, this is continuation of a public hearing for Popeyes Variance. A public hearing request for, by Harold Rose, representing Myla Property, owner for a variance for a C2 General Commercial District lot. The legal description for the property is Outlook 9 of Northeast Quarter, Last Highway, Right of Way, Section 35, Township 155 North, Range 83 West, County of Ward. Address is 328th Avenue, Southwest, so the public hearing is currently still open. Get a little update here from city staff.
So I do have some update. Right now, the staff's recommendation stands at deny the variance under Section 7.1-4C and Section 7.1-3A and C related to street landscaping, site landscaping, and buffer yards. So staff is recommending denial based on finding of fact and guidance from the city attorney's office. No hardship has been identified as existing, except other than those created by the landowner, and no administrative deviation is allowed in the LDO. Case would move, with the denial of the variance, the case would move into a zoning ordinance violation case. There was a meeting held today between the design professional staff and the applicant where we discussed if it moves into a zoning ordinance violation case, the applicant would need to make good faith, continue to make good faith efforts towards providing a plan that meets the purpose of the buffer yard as designed in the LDO and addresses all other zoning deficiencies by street landscaping, light trespass, and foundation plantings. I will also state that a plan was submitted that did address the deficiencies in street landscaping, light trespass, and foundation plantings that was approved by staff. The remaining element that needs to be addressed is the side buffer yard. So as of right now, because there is no hardship, the opinion of staff with guidance from the legal department is there's no longer a case to be heard in front of the Planning Commission, and our recommendation is denial of the variance based on finding of fact and that being that there is no hardship. And with that, I would stand for questions.
Any questions for city staff before we resume the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we'll continue the public hearing and we'll open up the floor to anybody that's in attendance that wishes to speak on behalf of this agenda item?
Just figured I'd get the party started, I guess. Yeah, we've been working pretty hard just trying to make sure we, you know, we try to get compliant and everything and trying to make sure we work things out, and we presented a couple of plans and been going through it, and I think you guys have seen all that. So again, we talked about some other things we can do today and work through that, and hopefully I can, we can sit down with the residents, our neighbors next door, and we can maybe figure out what we need to do. There's a couple of options that we have on the table to make it work. Either way, we'll have, you know, once we figure those two options out and weigh those down, we'll figure out which way we need to go, and then we'll make the changes and go from there. So I, I, I've been working hard, trying to make sure everything's where it needs to be, you know, with, with all the pieces that were requested at the last meeting. So hopefully you guys have, hopefully you guys are seeing some of that. Hopefully, if not, let me know. But well, again, just want to be a good neighbor at the end of the day. That my intent, my intent was never to come in and make everybody mad. That, that was the absolute truth right there. I just thought, again, like I'll say before, I was excited to bring Popeyes to Minot. Some days, I think this was one of the biggest mistakes I ever made financially, you know, to come in and to reinvest into the city of Minot with a Popeyes. And I'll say that out, you know, out loud because it's, I've had a lot of sleepless nights trying to figure out the, the cost it's going to take to fix everything and make things run and make everybody happy and things like that. And, and again, you know, just, just, just awareness, awareness, the person, what we found out was the, one of the individuals printed off a plan on the wrong sheet of paper, and it scaled it wrong. That's, that's what happened. And so instead of being the right proper measurement, they had the wrong measurement and went from there. And, and again, you know, you should be checking two or three times before you lay down a foundation. But again, learned a lot from this, and we'll hopefully get through this and go from there. But again, I just, if there's anything else I can do to make it right, let me know. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Rose? No? Anybody else in attendance wish to speak on behalf of this agenda item? If you could, you could state your name, and I know you're writing your address down, just give us your name again, sir, that'd be great.
Okay, Dan Perkins, I live in the condos right next to the Popeyes there at 410 28th Avenue. And it's not so much that, as far as the variance and how they're going to make everything work for it, I guess we're still having some issues, and I guess really for Mr. Rose. We're still having some issues with the trash pickup. It's seemed to gotten better, but we still have, it seems to be the trash is picking up seven o'clock and maybe even earlier. Also with the, I guess it's a grease truck that sucks the grease from the, from the building. Same type thing, it looks like a trash truck, but evidently with them kicking in the pumps and everything, it's causing some disturbance for, for residents there. One of the, probably the biggest one they were talking about was deliveries. It seems like deliveries are still coming early in the morning. So that was an issue they had there. One question we did have, looking at your site plan and everything, was we had spoken to and addressed the lights earlier as far as the light pollution and everything. With that, in the plan that was submitted for the revision, it shows the lights being moved. Is, as I understand, it's maybe to allow for the traffic to redo the curbing. Are the lights going back in the same place or are they? Okay, all right.
And, and here, if, Ken, can you address the, the commissioners here? And we'll allow him to come up.
He's back there.
I know, but it can come up, we'll, we'll allow him time to come up and answer all your questions like we did.
Good enough, sir, apologies.
Okay.
The only other thing there, like I said, we addressed the, oh, they also have a grease bin next to the dumpster. It looks like a small dumpster, but it's like the employees, like, I guess when at the end of the shift or whatever, they're bringing the cans out and banging them, and I guess closing time, I don't know, 9:30, 10 o'clock or whatever time they're coming out with the grease bins and banging them there, and I guess waking up our residents who have to work the next day. The only other thing I could say there, the, at the end of the property for Popeyes along our fence line, let's see, that'd be, the fence line goes north to south. We have a short fence that faces east and west, short-run fence. Evidently, that's become the Popeyes smoking area, lunch break. I found chicken bones, wrappers, cigarette butts. Be kind of nice if they found another place besides our property to take their breaks and discard of some of their items. So other than that.
Anything else you can think of? Did I cover everything?
Okay, good enough. So that's, like I say, it's just some, some items we've been noticing there, so that's all I've got.
Hi, I'm Linda Gray Bergard from the Association in Number 16, and I'm wondering what we need to do, or what we can do, to get some no-parking signs on the north side of the street. I realize that Popeyes now has moved a big pile of dirt and gravel that's on the east side, and there's some parking down there too, but I'm wondering about winter time and also when the parking lot gets overflowed, the parking along the street there.
I would say the best suggestion on that being the Planning Commission's, you know, based on like zoning and stuff like that, is to call the city, and then they have a traffic department, is that right? That you could make that request, Traffic and Engineering. There's also, if anybody has the My Minot app, I use it quite frequently, I'm kind of that dork, but there's a spot that you can put it on there and make.
There's a spot that you can put it on there and make a request, uh, on that. So as far as the planning commissioning, we, we can't, we can't make them put no parking sign up there. So I call them the city of Minot.
So we call who?
The city of Minot and ask for traffic and engineering.
Okay, traffic and engineering.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, because when the parking lot gets a little bit full again, it's going to be all up the street and it's so dangerous. Coming out of the association and that's a very big concern. Very big concern.
And I've sat in with them before and we've done some parking studies and stuff. So them guys will analyze that and they'll, they'll monitor that and they'll make recommendations. So but that, that's not outside our.
If any of you members here have been down and drove by where Popeyes is located and looked the situation over to see exactly what's going on. How many of you have? One, two? Oh, most of you have. Okay. I encourage the rest of you to go down and take a look at it and see and hopefully there's a lot of cars parking there, parked there when you do. Okay, thank you.
Chairman Offerdall?
Thank you, ma'am.
I just wanted to just reiterate what the, the young lady here said about going down and taking a look. I did do that and I had a young mom with me with their child and as we got to the end, we could see the smoking area that the gentleman before referred to. And the lady that was with me said, if my kids were playing in the back, I mean, so that could be an issue. So I, I wanted to let the, know that we hear them on that. So.
Thank you. Very good point. Anybody else wish to speak in opposition or in favor of this agenda item? Come on up, sir. Yep. You got some questions to answer.
Yeah, so just so you know, I do not like smoking. I think it's the worst thing ever. I've told all my employees to stay off the property when they go smoke. That's what I've told them. So I will address that because I don't have lunch breaks in the back parking lot. So, uh, again, I take things pretty serious. I run a business. I want to make sure we have a good image. I think smoking is the worst thing you can do in front of a business. Um, you know, that's just one of those things that, that's not. I, I've, I've, I have requested all the things for deliveries to be at a different time, for trash, for all the other pieces. Uh, the grease trap will go away because it's a temporary thing. The person installed it, installed the heat line wrong and we can't pump the oil out the way it's supposed to go in the tank that sits on the back of the. On the back of the building. So we've literally have had to have a temporary thing and we keep waiting for them. The wrong part came in, wrong parts came in, took a month to get them and we're waiting on the right parts to come in so we can function properly. So, a- a- again, trying to fix everything so it's smooth. They shouldn't be banging trash cans and things like that. Um, I, I don't know why they would be doing that, but anyway, again, just, I, I'll give you my cell phone. So that we don't have to have, come to a meeting. You guys can call me directly. Uh, and you guys can tell me what's going on and you can report things that look like stupidity or whatever it looks like in the business because that's not what we want in, in, in our business. Um, I, I think it's, I, I say the same thing. I, I don't want people smoking. I don't want people doing all those different things, eating on the property. Taking breaks when they're not supposed to and stuff like that. We got a business to run. We gotta look professional. Um, again, we are in a flow of things. So you guys understand the flow of business. When we opened up, it was super crazy. Alright, it was super, super crazy. We are very even. Every day, it's the same sales every single day. There's no craziness. Like my other business, Fridays and Saturdays are chaotic. In Popeyes, it's Monday through Sunday and it's about the same flow. So the thing is, I've already told my employees not to park on that street. I've told them to park in the property, to come over there. There's usually three or four cars that I've noticed that have been parking on the street. And I will call the store and tell them to move and, and that's the thing that, and they're getting better at it. So they're getting used to that and they're moving over there and things like that. So, again, on the plans, we have an exit right there so we can flow because of, with, with all the plans, with all the adjustments we have to do. We would not, we would not be able to have a drive-through. If we make all the adjustments and make sure we meet all the variances. We would not be able to function as a business. I would lose forty, forty percent of my business through my drive-through because we, we would hold up the line. We'd frustrate our customers and so we've been given approval to have a second exit out of there so the cars can flow through there a little bit easier. And, and so with that, that will help us, uh, with staying open as a business. I don't think anybody wants to see us close. I don't think that's the intent of this, but. You know, but again, trying to make sure that we can figure it all out. But again, I will give you my cell phone after the meeting and if there's anything. Okay, you can call me directly. I'll give you guys my cell phone and you guys can call me directly. That's the way I deal with customers. It's one-on-one, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if, if you could ask, what, what is the holdup then on that setback against the condominiums or apartments? What's?
Well, the, the problem is, is we had two, yeah, we had two, we have two windows. So a lot of people think we only have one, but we actually have two. And if we run out of, if we, if we're, if we're getting slammed or something at a moment or somebody comes in and wants sixty pieces of chicken, which we don't keep that much. Then the thing is you have to cook it. Takes at least fifteen minutes just to, to cook it all, to prep it up and things like that. So we usually bring them to the second window and let them sit there. And then the other cars can keep going around and keep escaping. That's why we had two lanes in the first place and that's the design of Popeyes. You know, is that to have an escape lane as we know that we're going to have those situations. So it's a situational piece. Um, with, with coming back to the buffer zone with that twenty feet, that eliminates our escape lane. We now don't have functionality of our second window, which is devastating for us. Uh, because now we have to then go figure out where they're going to pull up to or park and then send our employees across the building, out in the parking lot and things like that. You know, so, you know, that becomes a financial piece as well on the labor side of things. So that was the whole reason why we, we were trying to figure out if we could have at least an escape lane. For that second window so we could still function as a business and, and, and again, we thought, you know, if, if a car pulls over. A little bit, it's not going to change any noise. It's not going to change the difference because the cars already been coming through the drive-through. You know, but according to the, I guess, the, the ordinance or whatever it is, uh, you know, we're not allowed to do that. We have to have a twenty-foot buffer zone. And that's actually going to be pretty detrimental. So that's why we, uh, again, we have a second exit, but that still doesn't make us function as a business. So that's the other part that we are, uh, we, I, I gotta figure something out, out for that.
I wonder if you figured, I've seen a business up north that has pushed touchstone screen rather than, and I know a lot of the people here. Been concerned about the noise of voices and ordering, et cetera. Would a touchstone screen for ordering on one be a solution?
Yeah, I, I don't know how they would reach out through their car and touch a screen and order product, you know what I'm saying? I- in the store, that's, yeah. And if they order on their phone, they could order on the phone, it comes through. But, you know, again, a drive-through is a drive-through. That's in compliance. I mean, the drive-through where it's at. That, that's not going to change anything. Even if you move the drive-through five feet back, it's still going to be, it's like me talking to you and you move five feet further back, you're still going to hear. What I'm saying, you know, I'm sorry. I, I don't know how we would fix that, but. Um, you know, overall, the other things, you know, we'll get rid of the gre- the grease trap hopefully get done. I'm tired of hauling oil out of this store. You know, by hand instead of pumping it through and things like that. So, but, uh, yeah. Does that answer your question? I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. So, any other questions or?
Any other questions for Mr. Rose?
Okay, alright, I just, I'm just here to help.
Thank you, sir. Uh, oh, excuse me, sir. If you can come up and talk so that everybody can hear.
So if somebody's going to be waiting for their food in the lane, couldn't they just pull around to the parking lot and park there?
They could, but then we have to have our employees drive, have to go out, find where they park. Drive, you know, go all the way through the lobby, go through three doors instead of just going right up and handing it out a window where they're in the element, you know, out of the element to, that was the purpose of the second window. That was the purpose of the second window is so that you're not in the elements and things like that, you know, especially during the summer, you know. Probably a lot of employees would love going outside, but during the winter, it's, it would be a lot more difficult.
We live in North Dakota, so.
Yeah, I know.
So, like at McDonald's and stuff, they have a designated spot for them to park.
Yeah.
So they aren't in the drive-through lane.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I, I agree. It's just trying to find a spot where you could go and park them and, and again, I think it's just the angle when you actually. Look at the plans where you come, where you'd have to come through. How do you get into a parking spot? McDonald's is set up to where you can actually pull right into a parking spot.
Right.
Where we're not and that wasn't in the design. If it was in the design, we would have probably designed things a little bit different for that. And so that would, yeah, yeah, I, we've looked at it. I know, I just don't know how else to. Make it flow for the customer. Again, I'm trying to take care of my customers at the end of the day, trying to make sure they have an e- nice experience. They're not trying to. You know, I, you know what I mean? If you get frustrated in my drive-through, you're not coming back. You know what I mean? And at the end of the day, I gotta have customers coming in to be able to pay the bill at the end of the day. And I, and, and again, I just want to make sure it works properly or the customer has a good experience. So, that answered your question.
Kind of, yeah.
Yeah, sorry. I know, it's not good. I, we've looked at it.
Well, I know you need to take care of your customer, but this is also my mom living on the other side of the fence and.
Yeah, yeah. No, I know. No, I, and I understand that piece. So it's, again, just trying to make it all work for everybody.
Right.
Yeah, so I just know I'm gonna, you know, we'll be there for a while and again, the customer, if, if they have a bad experience, they're just not going to come back. I mean, they're, it's going to take them a while before them to come back. So I just, I don't want it to be a hindrance to, to the customer experience. I want everybody to be happy, even my neighbor. So, thanks.
Any other quest, planning questions or concerns?
My name is Jerry Langamo and I live in unit number eleven. And it was, um, June twenty-third when I first heard the weed whacker. The weed whacker, um, we heard again on the twenty-fourth. And that was when, um, the east section was starting to get, um, some gravel work where they were leveling it out. I have a picture from June eighth or June ninth. Of when the weeds were halfway up our six-foot fence. And I was one of those people, sir, that called in and said, we've got weeds, a weed issue over there. And so that would be a concern with right now not having it landscaped and how we might work on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jolene Stenfeld and I'm, um, property owner of unit one. And I guess I'm, my only question is. At this, at this time, it's been, my home has been on the market for sixty days. The realtors don't want to, their, people aren't interested in it because they don't want Popeyes in the backyard. I'm coming here to find out, you know, what's needing to be done. I'm listening to what Mr. Rose is saying. When are these, um, when is the landscaping going to be done so that I can tell my realtor to pass it on? So that there is a buffer, so that, you know, we're not able to enjoy our backyard. We have, I mean, we don't, we are not able to sit on the deck. Because we have, we get the view of the drive-through. My daughter and I have been hollered at by staff. I'll talk to Mr. Rose about that later. But that's uncalled for. And although I know that he's not responsible for that, but I want that buffer. I want to be able to sell our property. I want it to be nice for the next owners. I guess I'm just wondering, is it gonna, how long is it going to take for trees and everything to be put in place? That's my question.
My name is Sharon Jewell and I have, uh, condo number six and, and I'm on the opposite side from, from the, uh, from the restaurant. However, my question is for the, for the city planners, is, is this common for. Uh, residential property to be buttered right up next to a commercial enterprise such as a drive-in? I mean, what, what is the city doing on this? How did this happen? I mean, we, we have, we've had an injury here. You heard this lady say she can't sell her property. What's the city doing? I mean, is this going to happen to other people? It's a question for the, I'm, I'm asking you people.
Right.
You're the ones here that are, you know, having hearing. And, you know, other people can be injured in the same way are, the same way we are. And this is not right. Is it because of that zoning? Because we're C two? Yeah?
It would have to be. Chairman Offerdall, um, Ms. Jewell, um, we do have in our LDO a protection from this. That's where the zoning violation is happening. The definition of a buffer strip buffer yard is a landscape area used to visibly separate incompatible uses. Or use or to shield or block noise, light or other nuisances. That is the purpose of having the twenty-foot buffer between commercial, um, development and residential development. And it's important to note that your zoning of C two is, is irrelevant because in the LDO. It requires that a buffer yard be placed between incompatible uses or zones. So. The buffer yard is being required by the city and compliance is the requirement. Because you have a residential use. Yes, you are zoned C two. Um, like the other apartment building that came in and requested a zone change. Your future land use designation is urban residential. You could request a zone change. But that would change the requirement to the buffer yard. The buffer yard is required between. What's defined in our land development ordinance as more intensive and less intensive uses. So even though you're zoned C two, the use as, uh, identified by staff is an, is an RM or an RH use of the property. And that's why the buffer yard was required. In the original approved site plan. That was brought through engineering, planning and the city and approved for the developer. Did include a twenty-foot buffer with landscaping and trees in it. And that is designed to separate those what we would consider incompatible uses. So that's how the city has built protections into the LDO.
But that does not fix this.
The, right now, the, the recommendation from staff is to deny the variance and, and. Compliance with the land development ordinance is the requirement. It will move into a zoning ordinance violation case. Which is then enforced through all sorts of mechanisms, but. It will be moved forward with compliance being a twenty-foot buffer, landscape buffer, being the requirement in order to resolve the case. He will have to construct the twenty-foot buffer and landscape it. At meeting the requirements of the zoning ordinance.
So we are talking about an eventuality that, that will happen at some point.
If, uh, if the planning commission denies the variance tonight, the zoning ordinance violation case will begin tomorrow.
Okay. Because, you know, the, these people in number one have, you know, they have been, they, they can't sell their unit. And it's been on this, it's been on the market and this is, I mean, this, this is our investment. These are our homes. And, uh, we're not liking it.
Chairman, I, I, we can't promise that this will be resolved quickly, but what we can tell you is, is that it will be moved forward continuously. Or there are other mechanisms that would be brought into play that would involve the city attorney's office. So, there is an incentive for the developer to continue moving forward towards compliance.
Well, thank you for your answer. Um, I, I'm, you know, I hope it's going to happen, that it's not just, that we aren't wasting our time. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I also agree, this is part of the process and although it's a long painful process sometimes, th- this is the first step in the process. So. Third step now, this is the third month in a row, but this is also part of the process. So. Any other questions or concerns, comments, discussion?
I guess more of a comment. Um, speaking with Jolene, like I said, she's in unit one. She's had her property on the market for sixty days plus now. And I guess what we're looking at there, especially for that side on the, uh, east side of the condominiums. What we're looking at is what I bought or what they brought the, bought the property for, now with Popeyes being there because. Just of the situation there, losing money on the property. Basically, if you want to sell that place. How far am I going to have to go below what I actually paid for it and take a loss? I mean, tell somebody I can take a capital loss, my taxes ain't really a big plus to me, but anyhow, that's what we're looking at right now. So. What we actually bought them for and what we can sell them for, we're more than likely, there's a possibility of taking a loss. That's the only thing. As far as like, why was? That's the only thing, as far as like, why was a restaurant put right next to us? Maybe a floor shop probably wouldn't have an issue with that, or something of that nature. Sir?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm just sort of curious, and I'm sure that this is the case, that all of you were notified
Yes.
that Popeyes was gonna be, a, a building was gonna be put next to you, and this didn't happen?
No, no.
You were not?
The first notification we got was what came out, I believe Doug's office. We got the three-hundred foot or whatever it is circumference around it. I guess it was last October, last November, when they broke ground. It was like, okay, what are they, what are they building? Don't know. In fact, the way I found out is from Minot's fire chief. Uh, she's my neighbor, and she got ahold of me, and she goes, what do you think about the Popeyes going next door? What the hell are you talking about? So that's the only way I found out. So, other than that, but yeah, that's all I've got to say there.
Uh, Chairman Offertal, Commissioner Kibler, it's important to note that a drive-through restaurant is a permitted use in the C two commercial district. There would have been no permitting notifications to adjacent property owners. They simply applied for a building permit, submitted required plans for approval, and a building permit would have been issued. There's no notification on building permit?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none.
Chairman Offertal, Associate Planner Dan Falconer does have a couple of items that need to be read into the record that have been submitted in writing.
Thank you.
Jolene, would you still like me to read your letter? Okay. To whom it may concern, in the city of Minot Planning Committee. My name is Jolene Stenvold, and I am a homeowner of one of the condominiums, unit one, to the west of Popeyes on Twenty-Eighth Avenue Southwest. There were several of us that spoke regarding the variance requested by Mr. Rose and Popeyes on May seventh, twenty twenty-four. Being present in the meeting, it seemed to me that there was a lack of communication between the city, developer, and Mr. Rose. What I understood was that this was a unique situation because of zoning issues, not building. During that meeting, I had stated that I feel bad for Mr. Rose, that he is taking responsibility for everything. Why is it that the building kept being built even if it wasn't in the right spot? The response I received was the building is built in the right spot and meets building code. Perhaps I should have asked why was construction not followed with the initial projected plan that was zoned correctly? Had the initial plan been followed through, I would not be writing this letter and welcomed our new neighbor. Please allow me to explain why I'm writing this letter. My husband and I listed our condo for sale on May fourth. In the last thirty-nine days, we have had a total of four showings and an open house with zero traffic. The asking price of the property is not outrageous nor unrealistic, and we have reduced the price already by fifteen thousand dollars. Our realtor has weekly meetings with other agents and is being told that the property is not desirable because Popeyes being in the backyard. With that being said, I have encouraged our realtor to please bring clients during high business hours such as mealtimes. My biggest complaint is the use of our deck. We thoroughly enjoy our short, beautiful North Dakota summers and therefore use our deck most evenings. However, since Popeyes has moved in as our neighbor, we get to be watched by their clientele and employees. My daughter and I were recently sitting on the deck and were being hollered at by a couple of the employees outside of the restaurant smoking. Does this now impose a safety concern? My daughter nor myself were drawing attention to ourselves. From what I understand, Mr. Rose has hired an engineer to make the corrections to meet city ordinance, and I appreciate that. Required landscaping to be separate, to separate the property lines will help. However, it will not dismiss the fact that the value of my home has depreciated. I feel invaded and dismissed with the lack of the respect to the neighbors of twenty condominium property owners to the west of Popeyes. How would you and your family feel with a restaurant in your backyard? Would you all be welcoming? Please try to be mindful and respectful to where I'm coming from. Anticipating the city planning committee meeting on July second. Thank you, Jolene Stenvold. Additionally, I have a message from the building official, Luke Tillema. Dear Planning Commission, thank you for your commitment to the community of the city of Minot. The building related to this case was found to be building code compliant at the time of final inspection pursuant of twenty twenty-one IBC Section one one one. Thank you and have a great day. Sincerely, Luke Tillema.
So Chairman Offertal, it's important to clarify that at this time, the building official does plan to issue a final bill, a bill, a certificate of occupancy for the building that will allow, with the denial of the variance, he will issue a final certificate of occupancy for the building, and that will allow the zoning violation case to move forward.
Thank you for clarification. Okay, with that, we will close.
One thing y'all brought up in our last meeting, because I know we had Doug here, and who is it? Gentleman Luke, he's the, like, building inspector or whatever?
That would have been two meetings ago, because last meeting, nobody showed up.
Well, okay, yes, sir. Uh, with that, it was stated during that meeting that he went out and he identified that the foundation was in the wrong spot. And he said he cited that in his report. The question there would be, where does that report go to? And who would have been notified to maybe stop this or shut it down and make it right? So Doug doesn't have the authority to shut it down, Luke didn't have the authority to shut it down, but yet it was in his report and went to somebody. Do they have the authorization? It's, it's water under the bridge at this point, but I'm just saying for future.
My understanding, when he explained it to us, that the building was not built to the drawings, but it was still not a building violation because it still had
The building itself, no, the building passed. But where it was actually located, he noted, he said in his report, it was not in the proper location aboard the, the lot. It should have been moved over, I guess, more to the east. But it did meet the building codes and everything, a hundred percent.
No, that's, that was wrong, because Luke, Luke said it met, met all the building codes.
Yes.
So he couldn't shut it down because there was no violations for him to shut it down on. Now it became a zoning, zoning ordinance. So it was out of Luke's hand.
Okay, but
Now it's a zoning
He said he note, he said he noted it within his report that it was not, it should have been over twelve feet more.
I, I agree with you there. I just want to make sure that you understand that there's no building violation.
Correct, I, I agree, a hundred percent.
Right. And then now we're in the process of the zoning ordinance issue, and that's this process that we're going through right now.
Okay.
So he did what he was legally able to do.
Sure, I, I agree with that. But like I say, when that report went forward, it went to somebody, and did somebody say, hold, wait, wait a minute. Let's stop this now. We need to move it. So, but anyway, that's
And that's the process we're going through right now, sir.
Okay, sir.
So that, that's what we're, we're, we gotta go, it's a painful one sometimes, but it's, it's just a painful one that we gotta walk through.
Sure.
We gotta step through, and I, I
Chairman Offertal, Planning Commission, I think there was also a discussion had that by the time that that inspection was done, that the building was already well past foundation. It was well past picking up and moving it at that point. And at that point too, I think that we bring our plans to this table to be approved. And then from there, it's up to us to make sure that our property and our plans are thoroughly fulfilled. So I think at that time, we've done our best to try to eliminate that moving forward. But at that time, there was nothing that we could do in that process, and Luke did his job and we did ours. Unfortunately, we're here where we're at, and we hope that it can come together to work for everybody. Growth in the city of Minot is important, and I think that ultimately, if we can make what's best for everybody work, that's great. But all's we can do is hope that it doesn't happen again. There are other businesses around those condos as well. So I think that we've made the best that we could with an empty lot that was overbearing with weeds.
Sure. Well, and like I say, this is basically for future. You know, somebody else has run into the same situation that we've got now, so, but, thank you.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Chairman Offertal, I, I just wanted to add one more point, that no zoning violation occurred until the cement was put into place either. My staff and I have the authority to deal with zoning ordinance violations once they've occurred. But that particular violation did not occur until the pavement was actually placed. Because prior to that, it was a construction project, and no concrete was placed into the buffer yard. So there has been discussions among staff about how we can better communicate, what policies we can recommend to this body and the city council going forward to avoid these situations in the future. But as it stands, Luke enforces building code. My office and my staff, we enforce zoning code violations, and all of our enforcement is retroactive. So.
Yes, sir. Come on up.
Like I said before, I was, I was out on the site a lot, learning a lot of different things. Uh, one of the things that one of the inspectors told me when we were first getting started, uh, you know, when we were probably in, around December, he said, yeah, we have the plans, we review them, we look at them, you know, we've already gone through all that. And so to me, I, you know, I'm kind of, that's why I'm kind of bewildered. You know, that here, the, the same person that told me that would come out, approve a foundation, and then not open up the plans that they have access to, and then say, hey, here's, here's your buffer zone, here's this, boom, let me go look at it. And you go from there. Even if no concrete is there or not, I would think that you would open up the plans on the inspector's side of things and, and, and look through all those pieces and make sure that those things are being met. I think from that point, I mean, it's, I, I don't understand why an inspector would tell me that they have plans, and all they're gonna do is then look at a foundational piece, and then say, yeah, that foundation looks great. Let's move on, tag, and then move on. I would think we'd be opening up plans even on the inspector's side of things as well. And I think that's kind of what you guys are getting at, is, is that I understand the building was, was compliant, but, you know, all the other pieces have to go with it, you know what I mean? You start attaching things, and you gotta be able to make sure those all fit in the right spot as well. So I think that's, that's just my point. I know, I've heard that there's, you know, some discussion moving forward to hopefully fix some of those things in the future. But again, it doesn't fix this problem or fix our problem in a sense. But anyway, so that, that's just my, my two cents.
Thank you.
Chairman Offertal, it's important to point out that we do not provide engineering or land surveying services through the city. We do not have the tools available to us, nor do we even have a land surveying department for the city. The only reason that our building inspector was able to readily identify the deficiencies in the, as built versus the site plan is the existence of the neighbor's fence. It was, he'd been in the construction industry long enough to eyeball that it wasn't where it was supposed to be. In most cases, where you're on a vacant lot, where there's no fence on the adjacent property, we do not have land surveying tools. And we do not have land surveyors that work for the city or provide that service. So it's generally a requirement that the developer have, uh, land surveyor and engineer mark the location of their building for them. That's a service that the, the developer has to pay for.
Thank you. Any other comments? Did you have one? Are you okay? Okay. Any other, anybody else in attendance wish to speak in opposition or on behalf of this agenda item? I appreciate all the comments. I'll just add that discussion again. I, I feel like this was a productive, cordial conversation. So thank you. You got one more comment? Okay.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I will be the one who oversees the zoning violation case. So all of you that live in the condos, if you have any concerns about timelines and things, you can always ask me. I will be the one who writes the letters and everything like that to Mr. Rose. So just wanted you to know who to direct your questions to.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, I will close the public hearing on this item and turn it over to commissioners for a recommendation.
This is Commissioner Baumann here. Sorry, is it okay to, to go?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Commissioner Baumann.
Uh, well, I really appreciate the work that site designers and Mr. Rose have done. I am going to move that we follow our staff's recommendation and deny the variance based on their recommendations and finding a fact.
Yeah, I would second
I will second that.
So it's gonna be a lot of litigation and arguments, so it's best to get it started for everybody.
Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Baumann and a second by Commissioner Kibler. Any further discussion? Once again, I just want to make a comment here to appreciate everybody that's came up and spoke. That's kind of part of the process. We don't have a whole lot of discussion like this, so it's kind of fun for us once in a while when we get a crowd to come in, and it's very cordial and passionate. So I appreciate that. I appreciate the owner, Mr. Rose, coming up and answering all the questions that you can. So thank you for that, and I, I appreciate all the commissioners here putting the time in that they have by going to the facility and looking and, and asking the proper questions. So any further discussion with that? Now we'll call to all.
Baumann?
Yes.
Iverson? Johnson?
Yes.
Kibler?
Yes.
Longton?
Yes.
Menham?
Yes.
Offertal?
Yes.
Pontenilla?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, with that, we move on to agenda item number six, miscellaneous and discussion items.
All right, so what we have here is another business item. Vice Chair, Commissioner Baumann, had requested that we give an update on our implementation plans for our comprehensive plan. So it's important to note that the R twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan implementation goals come from a budget workshop that our community development director attended with city council members. City council was given, those members were given the opportunity to speak and lay out their priorities for implementation. They identified three goals for staff to work on in the twenty twenty-five year. The first is annexation. So this falls under our land use three goal. So it's looking at work towards annexation of priority areas, including islands of unincorporated area within the city limits and checkerboard properties along the east side of the city. So the avenue for working on this will be to work with the League of Cities and review possible changes to be made to legislation regarding support for cities looking to annex unincorporated islands within the city limits and reach out to the owners of these properties regarding annexation benefits. The second goal is realignment of our extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. This falls under land use goal number two. Establish a new joint powers agreement with Ward County to define new extraterritorial boundaries and clearly define areas where the city intends to provide services and reflect in, and reflected in growth areas identified on the future land use map. Our goal here is to establish a committee to review the current alignment. That would include stakeholders from Ward County, Burlington, Surrey, the City of Minot City Council, City of Minot Planning Division, and the City of Minot's Engineering Department. There are places where our city limits have grown out to the point where they're actually touching the extraterritorial boundaries. So making sure that we're buffering our growth areas. There are also areas where it might be reasonable to retract, track our extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction due to the lack of development in that direction. So making sure that we're being realistic about where our extraterritorial boundaries are.
Can I interrupt you for one sec? Can, can somebody grab that door shut for me, please? Oh, thank you. Already on, sorry about that.
The final goal was housing renovation and energy efficiency programs, so this covers H two and H three. This one might require a budget allocation for marketing. But primarily it, uh, it's looking at marketing the existing grant loan programs to assist in rehabilitation of existing housing stock. And broaden accessibility for residents with disability, disabilities, the elderly, first-time home buyers. Developing a targeted outreach program. And then also loan programs to assist with improving energy efficiency and creating long-term savings for homeowners and residents. Both of these are targeted outreach campaigns. With that, I would stand for any questions on our twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan implementation goals?
Mr. Chairman, I certainly don't want to delay the meeting, but if the county planning commission has got a certain understanding of the extraterritorial zone, what, what relationship does the city's extraterritorial zone? I know you can, we control the ET zone. So what does the county ET zone requirements or expectations have to do with ours?
Uh, to be honest with you, Uh, to be honest with you, we control the extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction and where that boundary is. But it's always good practices to reach out to your partners, Ward County, Burlington, Surrey. These are communities that directly abut our um boundary. And it it's just good practice to sit down at the table and discuss the city's future intentions with them. Um, besides just making decisions and laying it at their feet without any, you know, regard to their uh opinions on on the way development is happening within their communities and within their jurisdictions.
Yeah, thanks. Any further discussion?
Uh, this is Commissioner Baumann, I would love to just say thanks uh to Mister Billingsley, Mister Dietrichson and Mister Falconer for working on putting this together, um I know it can be kind of an honorous thing, but I also really appreciate uh seeing where we align with our our professional staff that work for us as well as the um the city council and kind of finding out how we in our work as planning commissioners can can streamline, work together, help to achieve these goals and um, you know, it's it's super cliche, you know, we talk about shoot for the moon, cause even if you miss, you'll end up in the stars, uh but that idea of having goals really does consciously or subconsciously help direct uh the activities of of this particular body of department and so. Um, yeah, just wanna say thanks, I'm looking forward to seeing uh how we do at achieving these goals in twenty twenty five and uh how we continue to move forward on our twenty forty comp plan.
Thank you, any further discussion? Okay, that will move on to, I believe we have a six point two other other business?
We do, um, this is an opportunity for us to all uh recognize uh Vice Chairman Commissioner Tim Baumann, who has been named by the Western Planner Organization as the twenty twenty four Citizen Planner of the Year. Um, he is being recognized for his work on the Minot Planning Commission, recycling advocacy, the one thousand trees program and the Union Silos Art Project. Uh, this is an award that recognizes a layperson who has distinguished themselves as a champion and a leader of a project or program that embodies the principles of planning, so. Congratulations to Vice Chairman Tim Baumann.
Congratulations.
Hey, thanks, everybody, uh we will celebrate in August.
Sounds like a plan.
Thank you, uh any other other business?
Uh, none that I'm aware of.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to agenda item number nine or seven with adjournment. Meeting adjourned.